Up to our agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everyone not in favor? We have an adopted agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting held December 7th, 2021? All right, so, somebody want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second? Everyone in favor of approving the minutes from the meeting held December 7th, 2021, say aye?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? Motion carries. Do we have any comments that are from the public for items not on the agenda? Okay, I'll move on there. All right, let me get to my cheat sheet. Hold on one second. So, we are going to have a public hearing for preliminary subdivision plat request by the Q LLC Care of Milestone Partners, agent for WMD Quisenberry Jr. Estate LL, care of Whitney Quisenberry owner, to amend a preliminary subdivision plat approved on May 7th, 2020 for a 214 lot subdivision on 66.106 acres at Zero Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia. Tax map number 14-6-25, including a waiver to allow street trees in the row. So, staff, does anybody want to come up and speak to us about this?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the planning commission. The application today is a preliminary plat amendment. The location, as you read, is up here, the Quisenberry property located on Ivy Street, 254, as you head out of the city. You'll recall that we approved a major subdivision plat for this property and council approved it subsequently on May 7th, 2020. The subdivision is, in its entirety, is 66 acres and the approved subdivision had 214 lots arranged in a cluster development style, which is smaller lots with dedicated open space. It's in RS 12 district and it was a by right subdivision. They did not request any rezoning or any other discretionary approvals. So, the subdivision, as often happens with subdivisions, issues come up in the course of construction and design and planning. Staff are empowered to make minor adjustments, particularly stuff dealing with utilities, stuff you all would generally not look at. But if any of those adjustments deal with the locations of rights of way or increased density in any way or address other things that were brought up by the planning commission, then we're not empowered to approve those changes and they have to file for a new major subdivision process, which is what they've done. That said, it's still a by right subdivision and so if they comply with the provisions of the subdivision ordinance, they're still entitled to subdivide the property. And if their approval is denied, if you find that their new subdivision plat does not meet those standards, then they would default back to the approved plat from May 7th. The changes in this case, there's sort of three big changes that we're requesting with this plat. I don't know if you want to maybe get the lights so we can see the location better. Most of them deal with the road connections. I'd say road connections are the biggest sort of gray area with subdivisions. You know, we require interconnectivity and good sort of connections to neighboring parcels, but you know, that's up for debate where that exactly should be. So, the first big change is to the northern road connection. The original subdivision plat had a road extending directly north Claybrook Drive up into the adjacent parcel here. The new subdivision plat moves that connection further to the west, so it's not aligned with that northern road. The main reason is that the owner of this property is coming with a subdivision proposal and a rezoning proposal in the near future. Well, they're coming with a rezoning proposal, I don't know that they have a subdivision really in the works yet, but in the course of their due diligence, they've discovered that having the road connection platted here results in them having to do significant grading and bring in about 20 feet of fill to build up to where that road connection would be, because there's a significant drop off right here. And that proved impossible because there's an existing gas transmission line there. So, in order for them to be able to make that connection, they were going to have to engage in a very expensive gas line relocation project, bring in a lot of fill. And also, there were going to have to be a lot of retaining walls involved on both sides to deal with the topography imbalance. So, they approached the current applicant, the owner of this property, and asked to have that road connection moved to the west where the topography makes a little more sense, it's a little bit flat across there. So, they've agreed to that and that results in getting, us being able to get rid of a lot of those retaining walls, have smooth grading between the subdivisions and have a road connection there. As I mentioned, it does result in the road no longer being aligned with the north-south street. That's not ideal for traffic, but it's not terrible. It's better for the neighborhoods in the sense that you'll have less through traffic with more turns. So, here's the location of the new connection. You can see it about, it's about seven or eight lots further west of where the original connection was platted. The second major change is on the eastern side and it again deals with the road connection. Originally, the applicant had two undeveloped road connections platted on the eastern side to what's known as the Smith property or the district home property. Since that time, the adjacent property, the district home property, has been pursuing a conservation easement and currently has a state-funded environmental remediation project ongoing on the property. Staff thinks, while they don't have that secured yet, staff thinks the likelihood that that's going to turn into a significant subdivision is very low. So, we think it's much less necessary to have sort of two road connections right there next to each other heading into that area. You know, the original purpose of it would have been to integrate those two subdivisions in the future. So, the applicant has requested that we remove one of those road connections and maintain the other. The southern one makes more sense, both because it's aligned with the road heading out towards Ivy Street and because it could potentially be aligned with a northern connector coming from Bridge Avenue, as shown on our comprehensive plan. Current comprehensive plan shows a road connection coming from King Avenue further east, but Bridge Avenue probably makes more sense. So, this removal allowed them to fit in one additional lot as well, which is why the request is for 215 lots as opposed to 214 lots. That still puts them well below, I believe they're at 3.25 lots per acre and their max is 3.5, so they're still well below that. Again, here's the location of the eastern road connection that would be retained and here's the location of the one that would be removed. And that road would be designed to make sense there. Again, it's allowed for one additional lot and that's why the lot number is changed and again, why that triggered a request to the planning commission. The last item is a waiver. Council's authorized to waive elements of the subdivision ordinance. Interestingly, we are not authorized to waive elements of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance does bind the city, but the subdivision ordinance can be waived by council. In this case, they've requested a waiver to allow trees in the right of way. And the condition that we'd like to attach to that is that the tree species will have to be approved by staff. And this shows a typical road section. You have a road here in the middle, again, it's a narrower road in accord with our revised subdivision ordinance. And there, it's going to be a six-foot grass curb strip here, a five-foot sidewalk, and then our standard utility easement. What the applicant ended up with was, first of all, having to have a fairly wide grass lawn in order to ensure that the driveways slope was underneath VDOT's maximum and so that the sidewalks would remain level and accessible all the way through and you wouldn't have a lot of sidewalk ramps going up and down on driveways. But the other big thing about this is just that trees in the curb strip is really, that's sort of orthodox, traditional neighborhood design planning, that you would want the trees to be in between the sidewalk and the travelway, shields the pedestrians, it also shades the street and provides a better framing for the street, sort of considered to be the better way to do it. Now, when we passed the new subdivision ordinance and we narrowed the roads, the public works department pushed for trees to be pushed out of the right of way simply because there was concern with the narrower right of way, that we wouldn't be able to fit all the utilities in and that there would be conflicts with tree roots and utilities and that type of thing. And you do see that in our older neighborhoods, in like the tree streets or the Lynnhurst area, that where there are good street tree coverage, that often there will be conflicts between utility lines and trees and those will have to be dealt with. And so, it's an increase to maintenance costs at times. A lot of that, though, we do find is dependent on the species of the tree. And so, this neighborhood, given already how dense it is and how wide this curb strip is, staff felt is a great opportunity to experiment with sort of putting the trees back where they're supposed to be. But we prefer to do it by, we're not, we don't feel that we're ready for a text amendment to sort of set up a system for everybody, but with a waiver and we can approve certain tree species and see how those perform in the future in this subdivision. Here's a picture off Google Earth of Woodrow Avenue in an older neighborhood, which kind of shows you, in a much older neighborhood, what sort of trees in that location look like, you know, where you have your sidewalk and you have your curb strip, fairly narrow roads similar to theirs, and then your mature trees. Again, it helps to sort of frame the street better, I think Woodrow is one of the better streets in the city. Obviously, these will be much smaller trees, they'll, you know, be a new neighborhood, it won't look quite that way, so. Also, they'll have a much higher density of driveways, which we'll talk about in a second. So, the changes, we feel will help to retain, still retain the road connectivity that our subdivision ordinance calls for, so we think that they still meet the provisions of the subdivision ordinance. And the waiver is something that staff would like, is an opportunity to experiment with returning to more traditional neighborhood design principles. Again, this is a by right subdivision, so it's not about, you know, the question today is not whether we like the subdivision or not, it's entitled by right. But staff believe that the applicant's amended plat does meet the standards of that subdivision ordinance, that they still meet our requirements for connectivity and other elements of the ordinance. So, that's why we're recommending approval. Any questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question. We spoke about this earlier. If a street, if a tree becomes decayed along the street?
Yes.
If I'm walking my dog in the sidewalk and a branch falls off and conks me on the head, who's liable?
The liability, I believe, there would have to be a report of negligence, there would have to be a report that a tree was dead and then the city proved that the city ignored it. Is that correct in order for the city to be liable?
But assuming that notice is given?
Yes.
Who is liable?
The city would have to go out and trim that tree, yeah. And we have a program to do that through our Parks and Rec Department. So, I've spoken with them about that program and they feel that they're capable of handling the tree maintenance. They said for the first 20 to 25 years that they don't expect hardly any maintenance, that they often do a trimming at about the five-year mark to kind of ensure the success of the trees. But as the neighborhoods get older, you know, they have to spend more time on trees in the right of way, they're in the tree streets neighborhood, for instance. So, yeah, over time, I think that would, creates more maintenance issues. But they're very eager to see good tree coverage, especially over the streets, and so they sent along their strong support for this.
But just, so in approving this, and I'm not opposed to it, but in approving this, it's with the understanding that this city be responsible for maintaining those trees?
Yeah, definitely with the understanding that over, over time, and it's not a huge amount, but it does increase cost for the city to maintain trees in the right of way versus, you know, keeping trees far away from anything that's infrastructure. I will say that in this neighborhood, and part of why it's a good opportunity to discuss this, is that oftentimes you're concerned about the proximity of the trees to the utility lines and because of the reduced width between the back of the sidewalk and the houses and the utility lines running laterally that you're largely concerned about, that you're still going to, even if the trees are in the front yards, they're still going to be fairly close to those utility lines. So, the public works department felt that it was not a huge difference and that this was sort of a worthwhile opportunity to do that.
Just one other question. The streets are 25, 26?
26.
Or is there going to be any limitation on parking on the street?
Yes, there's still limitation on one side of the street.
And the developer understands that that's, when he's selling the property, the buyer needs to be informed of it?
Yes, yes, yeah, we're going to not repeat the Claybrook debacle. There will be, yeah, curb painting and signage to ensure that that's, that's clear off the
Okay, does, is the applicant here? If you wouldn't mind giving us your name and address, it'd be great. Wait, no, I'm allowed to have the, if needed, the chair invites the applicant for questions or comments. That's before I open the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I think you actually have to do it during the public hearing, is my understanding?
Okay. All right, all right, well then, I'm, sorry about that. My cheat sheets are wrong, my cheat sheet is wrong. I'd like to open the public hearing for a preliminary subdivision plat requested by the Q LLC Care of Milestone Partners, agent for WMD Quisenberry Jr. Estate LL, care of Whitney Quisenberry owner, to amend a preliminary subdivision plat approved on May 7th, 2020 for a 214 lot subdivision on 66.106 acres at Zero Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia. Tax map number 14-6-25, including a waiver to allow street trees in the row. Now, the applicant can approach the podium. Please give us your name and address.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is LJ Lopez with Milestone Partners. I live at 1540 Delphi Lane in Charlottesville. So, we do have a presentation for you. It really focuses less on the technical plan, preliminary plat changes and more the tree waiver request and then item number two, which is the zoning text amendment. So, I'm not sure procedurally how you-
Zoning text amendment has to be in the next public hearing, right?
Right, so should we wait on that presentation?
Yeah, do you have any work related to the plot amendment?
Nothing to the plot amendment. So, with that, then, we can kind of touch on the waiver.
That'd be great.
I think the waiver, I've got images in the presentation for the trees and we can look at those. As staff indicated, it's the historical, traditional location for that tree in cluster development nature of the proximity and the density of this with the setbacks, there's only but so many locations for the trees to go and we feel that this is the best from a planning perspective, understanding that engineering and public works and all of the departments have their own perspective on that location, but this is the historic location for trees in the tree lawn. It kind of has that, that general name for a reason and we feel that it's additive to the, to the overall neighborhood as opposed to that tree being in the front yard. It, it takes away and diminishes, I think, from the overall streetscape. So, that's our two cents on that. Happy to answer any questions on any of the technical preliminary plat, the three plat
Any questions from anyone?
The trees that are going to be planted, and maybe you'll be working with Luke on that, are they the, the type of trees that will not extend roots to disrupt either the roadway or the sidewalk?
Given the nature of trees, those roots do grow to, you know, to root them, to plant them for the longevity. You know, trees on the Charlottesville downtown mall have been planted and grown up and they've done so with, with proper maintenance and care. Over time, now they're having to think about the, reaching their, the end of their life cycle and replacement of those, but that's a separate issue. For this, there's a typical Virginia street tree list that is kind of common practice and we're happy to coordinate the species of those with Luke to minimize that root concern and with the Parks and Rec Department, who have far more experience than I do about what works in this municipality. So, take no exception to the comment that Luke had in coordinating or condition in coordinating the street trees with approval.
Any other questions?
We recommend that as a condition to the waiver, that they be required to follow staff's recommendation on tree species. The Parks and Rec Department has a list of tree species they think would work in those contexts.
As long as they're native and not imported from anywhere.
Okay, is, I think that you can sit down.
Thank you.
I don't think you have any more questions. Is there anyone else from the general public who would like to speak? Do you have any email comments or anything?
I do not have any email comments. The only, we have a comment in favor of the subdivision plat, just from the adjacent developer, since obviously this greatly reduces their expense in the building, so.
Okay, so, I think I can close.
Or, we, I don't know that we have a sign-up sheet out, so I would probably invite anybody who's, yeah, so I think we should probably invite-
Oh, that's what I meant, is anybody, does anyone want to approach the podium? Please come forward, give your name and address.
This is on the driveway expansion?
This, that's the next public hearing. So, this is limited to the, what I read earlier about the, the plat request and the waiver to the trees in the right of way. Okay, so now I really think I can close the public hearing. So, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have to say the whole thing again? Anybody, any thoughts? To commissioners?
Move to approve.
I'll second, we'll go ahead.
Okay, everyone in favor of approving the plat adjustments and the waiver to allow street trees as applied with the, with the recommendation that staff be able to approve the trees, the species of trees, as requested by the Q LLC Care of Milestone Partners, agent for WMD Quisenberry Jr. Estate LL, care of Whitney Quisenberry owner, to amend a preliminary subdivision plat on 2020 for the 214 lot subdivision on 66.106 acres at Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia. Tax map 1625, including the waiver and the recommendation of about tree species. Say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? The, motion carries. Okay. So, now we have another public hearing. It's an exciting night here at the Waynesboro Planning Commission. We are having a public hearing for zoning text amendment request by the Q LLC Care of Milestone Partners to amend City Code Section 98.5.1.5.8.3. (G) to change the allowable maximum width of impervious vehicle travelways in parking areas within the required front yard setback. So, I would give it to staff to give us the 411.
All right, thank you. This is a request by the same applicant for a zoning text amendment affecting residential driveways. Again, the location of their development is on Ivy Street. So, here's the existing language in our code and it's for all these housing types, single family, detached, attached, zero lot line houses, two-family duplexes and corner lot duplexes. The maximum width of impervious vehicle travelways and parking areas located within the required front yard setback shall not exceed 12 feet or 25% of the lot width, whichever is greater. You can think about that for a few minutes. The additional language that we'd like, that they're proposing is, and staff are, not, well, I'll get later to what staff are recommending, but staff did work with them on if this change were to happen, this is the way we'd prefer to see it happen. Saying for single-family detached, that the maximum width of impervious vehicle travelways and parking areas shall not exceed 16 feet or 25% of the lot width, whichever is greater. For single-family attached, zero lot line houses and two-family duplexes, corner line duplexes, the maximum lot widths are narrower, so we feel that we definitely would be opposed to expanding those driveway widths. In the case of single-family detached homes, the lots can be as narrow as 50 feet and the zoning ordinance and this particular development, using the cluster development, they're 52 feet. So, again, in the applicant subdivision, the typical lot width is 52 feet. That means that by this ordinance, that driveway width cannot exceed 16 feet or cannot exceed 12 feet or 25% of the lot width. 25% would be 13 feet for them. Again, in some of the urban residential zones like RS 5 and RG 5, there are single-family lots as narrow as 50 feet or the maximum driveway width would be, would be 12 and a half feet. So, 13 feet, just to give you a sense, is not wide enough to put two cars next to each other, be wide enough to put like a car and a motorcycle next to each other, you know, it's generous for one car, but it's too narrow for two cars, really. So, in this case, their subdivision will be built with two-car garages. We're finding that most of the new subdivisions, that just about everybody wants a two-car garage and so that garage door width is going to be 16 feet and they'd like to align the driveways at 16 feet with those garage doors. So, in the ordinance, remember, it says impervious vehicle travelways, so that's any kind of impervious pavement. Theoretically, the applicant can construct wider driveways using permeable pavement or permeable pavers of some kind. So, that would be a little bit, that would be more expensive for them. It would still provide, it would be a little nicer material, it would still provide some infill or infiltration of water. That said, permeable pavement shouldn't be taken as too much of a misnomer or as too much of a phrase, that it's only so permeable. And if it's not maintained properly, as we often find, homeowners don't necessarily maintain it properly, it's not that permeable. So, that's sort of one, one wrinkle here. The other wrinkle is that individual driveway permits do not require review, that if you go, you know, if you want to build a driveway, you own a house already, you're just building one driveway, you go to building and zoning, you can just pull a permit. You don't have to get design professional to submit plans and review the plans and get them approved or anything. So, that means that often, post-development, you know, when you're out of the site plan process, sometimes individual buyers go in and they pull driveway permits and pour them wider. But most of the time, people tend to stick with what they bought and so the biggest impact happens when the subdivision is constructed. The main reason for this ordinance is just to try to reduce the amount of pavement that's sort of in the, you know, in the view obscuring the streetscape when you have narrower lots. You know, these houses are on 50-foot lots and you can see that they have two-car driveways and it just makes it so that the driveway's a bigger proportion of the yard. Again, here's some other homes that currently exist that the buyers have expanded their driveways to have, in this case, I believe these are 18-foot driveways, this one might be 20. But these are also narrow lots, about 50-foot lots, you know, just a tad narrower than the subdivision that's being constructed and so they've expanded their driveway width. And you can kind of see how it, it just creates a significant amount of pavement across kind of the streetscape there. What's allowed for in the ordinance is single-car driveways. Theoretically, people can tandem park in a single-car driveway. It's really meant to line up with a single-car garage. Can look a little bit awkward if it's a single-car driveway leading up to a two-car garage in a smaller lot, but ideally, sort of this is what the code calls for. How big a difference there is between, you know, this and this is sort of up to you, but I've just tried to lay out the considerations here. Staff is not actually making a recommendation on this and it's not, not meant to be a punt on our part, maybe it's a little bit of a punt, you know, fair enough, but, you know, I think as I got further along in trying to come with a recommendation, I just got to the point where this is, this is really mostly a matter of aesthetic preferences and your, and your values and I kind of got to where I, I don't have a big, you know, there's nothing in my education or anything or professional experience that would tell you the answer is just, you know, you can see it, what do you think of it? But kind of just to lay out the considerations for you, there's the aesthetics of it. You have in narrow lot subdivisions, the wider driveways can kind of dominate the streetscape, that's part of why the, the restrictions there to try to have less pavement across those front yards. On the other hand, you know, if the driveway is sort of oddly narrower and flares out right at the driveway, at the garage door, that could look odd as well. There's stormwater. On the one hand, small lots means there's a higher density of impermeable surface, so, you know, limiting that impermeable surface in the driveway can be helpful there. That said, the applicant already has to design stormwater infrastructure to handle all the runoff from their development regardless. And as I mentioned, permeable pavement is not that great performing a product without significant maintenance. I don't know that there's a really dramatic difference in how much stormwater runoff you'll see if you have a 13-foot versus 16-foot or 16-foot permeable pavement versus 16-foot Convenience, it's a big situation, so with reduced road widths, remember in this subdivision, we're going to have narrower roads, we're only, there's only going to be parking available on one side of parts of those roads. The wider driveways could reduce the likelihood of any conflict over parking, you know, that might be a good idea just to ensure that we don't have issues with parking in this neighborhood in the future. And again, many- And again, many homebuyers are likely to expand their driveways anyway. So there's sort of a question there to be had. Maybe you go ahead and allow the 16-foot driveway and then they don't come back and build a 20-foot one later. Another consideration is sort of affordability. Depending on how much you care about that, on the one hand, maybe you would prefer that the neighborhood had to do a nicer, you know, a more expensive permeable pavement for the driveways. On the other hand, you know, having, you could also argue that this ordinance sort of specifically disincentivizes the smaller or sort of targeted these smaller lot neighborhoods. And in general, they're, you know, we consider them more efficient and better for the environment and more affordable. So it's sort of a disincentive, a big disincentive for somebody to buy a house in a smaller lot subdivision if they can't get their, park their two cars in their driveway versus they would have to buy in a bigger lot subdivision in order to be able to get that. So those are just some of the pros and cons, I think, from staff's perspective. I think they're all fairly straightforward and easy to understand. And again, with all of them, there's sort of a mitigating factor that, you know, we kind of end up with that the impacts of the city are relatively small either way. And that I think a lot of this is going to depend on visually what, you know, do you think, do you all care that there's, you know, wider driveways in the city or how much of a priority do you think that is for versus ensuring that there's ample parking, no conflicts over the more limited street parking in the area. So that's why we don't have a direct recommendation. But the applicant obviously has a recommendation they have, and so they're gonna make a more of a case for why they think that we should change the ordinance.
Thank you, Luke. So I'm going to open the public hearing for a zoning text amendment requested by the Q LLC Care of Milestone Partners, applicant to amend City Code Section 98.5.1.5.8.3. (G) to change the allowable maximum width of impervious vehicle travel ways and parking areas within the required front yard setback. Would the applicant like to approach the podium? We already know where you live, so.
Madam Chair Commissioners, good evening again. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I have a few precedent images. I don't have any additional insight to what staff had shared. I think they covered the considerations that are before you this evening. For us, it comes down to, I think, one of the practical consideration, which is parking. So due to the cluster development being tight front yard setbacks and the houses being pulled toward the street, the driveway is predominantly within that front yard setback, limiting its width. And so in its current 52-foot wide, it would yield a 13-foot, it wouldn't align with the two-car garage, and it wouldn't allow for two additional. So if you think about your two-car garage and how you may or may not use at home, half of it might be storage. It's not two off-street parking spaces, although that's what it does qualify for from a zoning perspective. So if one of those is now limited with storage, and these houses are not predominantly throughout the neighborhood, not basement lots, so you don't have your basement for storage in this neighborhood. You have one in the garage, then you have your driveway. So in the current zoning text, it would be 13 feet wide and you have one in the driveway. So satisfying the two off-street. This would align it with the width of the garage door and would provide additional opportunity for off-street parking, given that the streets are narrower and there is limited parking on one side of the street. So that's largely where we're coming from. From an aesthetic standpoint, I have just a few additional. So, street tree waiver, we already addressed. I thought they were, both public hearings were going to be read at the same time. A review of this zoning language, which staff has already addressed for us, the street tree waiver, which we've just going to see if I can't get the So this is a neighborhood in Charlottesville. You can see 42-foot wide lot, so even narrower lot. 16-foot garage door, 16-foot driveway. And the balance of that yard and side yard setback is what comprises the front yard. So in the proposed neighborhood, which is referred to as Ivy Commons, and the preliminary platte that you had just made recommendation for approval, that lot is 10 feet wider. So you would have 10-foot additional width between driveways, between houses, between, you know, in that front yard area. So precedent image, and within this image, it shows street tree in that tree lawn between sidewalk and the, and the street. So again, similar, this neighborhood in the 16-foot garage door, 16-foot driveway, these are 42-foot wide lots, has a unifying landscape treatment, which with this hedgerow, that adds a different aesthetic element to the streetscape and is a nice appearance throughout the neighborhood. So one of the ways I believe that they addressed that front yard in a different, instead of it just being all lawn in the tighter setback. Next. So this being an aerial view, so top-down, showing here, these are 60-foot wide. I couldn't find precedent image of exactly a 52-foot wide lot. But again, this shows front load, so driveway access instead of a rear load with an alley as we typically see in city environments. This neighborhood, 60-foot wide lot, 16-foot wide garage door, 16-foot wide driveway. It aligns, it's linear, it's straightforward. It provides for off-street parking spaces. You can see in the image to the upper left that too, they actually built out an pervious, impervious surface. In the side yard setback, there were no restrictions within this zoning or this neighborhood to allow for that to create additional off-street parking, what this owner did in modifying that. But again, in the 60-foot wide, you can see the balance of that is the front yard, and that creates the additional, comprises the additional green space. I think we might have one more image of. Yeah, so similar, same neighborhood, high-level overview, you can see the front yard. These have similar setbacks, so we can't have a car overhanging into the public right of way. So over across the sidewalk, no bumper, so the houses are set back anywhere between 18 and 20 feet, even though the front yard setback is 15 feet because 15-foot just wouldn't allow for a vehicle to park in that driveway without overhanging. So that's the one more. So here's a little bit elevated view, summertime, tree lawn, 6-foot tree lawn, 5-foot sidewalk, trees in that tree lawn lining both sides of the street, 16-foot wide driveway, and the balance of that comprising front yard in between houses. Setback of these houses and garage, 18-plus feet in order to allow car to park without any bumpers overhanging into that sidewalk. And this just reviews, so we had seen that before. I had kind of combined both, and then showing the driveway aligning 16 feet with that two-car garage. So you can see in this, the dash line, maybe I have. Here we go. So this dash line here being the front yard setback at 15 feet, all these houses you can see are being proposed setback further than what that front yard setback would allow for. And that is to accommodate parking of that vehicle on the driveway without any overhanging into the public right of way. And so it would be a linear aligning the 16-foot garage door with the driveway, the balance of that front yard to the property line, and then side yard setback of the adjacent house would comprise the open space, green space, front yard of each of those houses. So minor change, but we think big impact to the overall functionality of the neighborhood. It does no doubt have an aesthetic impact, and I think as Luke had alluded to, in practice over time, homeowners will seek their own equilibrium with their lot and how they utilize their driveway. And so I think this gets ahead of that and provides the practical solution on day one and aligning it with the ordinance so that there's no disconnect between what the homeowner does in the future.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would there be a restriction on add your space improvement test to that driveway beyond 16?
Anything beyond that, should the zoning text amendment, as we've submitted and proposed, be adopted? That would be a zoning ordinance violation, so any
I mean, the picture, you had pointed out, where somebody had extended that 16-foot drive, 15-foot drive. On one of those, you have to modify it.
Correct. So the current zoning ordinance wouldn't allow for, and as I understand it going forward, it wouldn't allow for that either.
Are you referring to the applicant building wider driveways or the homeowner?
Homeowner coming in, requesting, or really, you know, you don't want that system.
That's what I'm saying, that they can do that currently, that we don't, we don't we don't require site plan review, so they don't trigger the site plan requirements in the if they're a single homeowner building one driveway, they can pull a permit directly and they don't trigger the site plan review.
But they can do that regardless of whether we change the text amendment or not.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So they could come in and pour a 16-foot driveway anyway.
Yes, they could. They could expand that, yeah. Yes. Now, sometimes we can catch zoning violation. But yeah, it's not a great system currently with but again, we've been loath to make individual homeowners submit a site plan for just a driveway.
Just to be silly, I mean, with these small lots, could they turn the entire thing into concrete?
No, I believe we have a, I believe we have a way to stop that. But it would be, yeah, I would need to, I'd need to talk to the zoning administrator about what her enforcement mechanisms are, but but I mean, there's quite a bit of leeway in what folks can do on their own, their own property once they own it.
Of course.
Yeah, at least, at least under the current ordinance. I, I think that we could probably, and we have discussed altering it so that we could go in at site and try to catch people with the wider driveways, but it gets really tough because then somebody spent 10,000 bucks on a driveway improvement that they pulled a permit for, and then you come in and tell them they have to tear it up. It gets real dicey quickly.
Because I like the uniformity, the 16 and 15, and it makes sense. There was a, you know, it makes sense, but talking about, you know, the runoff and controlling and down slowly, what's going to happen, you know? It's a lot of, you know, not to be, or somebody coming in, that's the same on that 16.
We can look into having folks submit, you know, site plans for driveway stuff. It's just in the past, that's been considered a step too far as far as bureaucratic, you know, red tape.
If it's already 16 feet, though, I think that would decrease the need to expand it further. I think if you have a driveway that's not as wide as your garage, your garage, you'd be more compelled to increase it.
That's a good reason to have it 16 feet, but as the picture shows, someone did think that we would have to put it beyond that 16 feet. So I think that was an issue, so if there's going to be a water runoff, it's a doubt, you're not concerned to be looking for that. But now, they're all front-facing garages.
They are all front-facing garages. There's no rear-loaded alleys in this, in this neighborhood. I hear, I hear the concern, and I think it's a valid one. I'm not sure what the appropriate mechanism is, whether it's I think inherently it decreases the probability of that if it's already 16 feet. You know, it's the one-off, the outlier condition that might do that, not the norm. I think if they're 13 feet, you're going to have everyone pulling permits day after they get a CO and move in, so it kind of avoids that. I'd be open to working with staff on kind of evaluating mechanisms, whether it's zoning and enforcement on zoning, or whether it's association from a covenants and restriction in driveway width to ensure that uniformity and that the limitation doesn't expand beyond the 16, 16 feet.
That would be much more enforceable.
Might be able to put a covenant in the deed that requires some sort of permission to widen the driveway.
Right, so the association covenants could address that through their board.
I think that would be probably as big a step we can take without being bullies and wasting our time enforcing a few feet of concrete.
Are you making this request for the Quisenberry subdivision?
It's, it's a, it's a zoning text that would apply to the city.
But you're requesting it basically to apply to, in your development of the Quisenberry subdivision, is that correct?
It's prompted by the disconnect that the current zoning, yes, I mean, in short. But it's prompted by the disconnect in the current zoning text would, would only allow a 13-foot driveway.
Right. Are there any lots in the Quisenberry subdivision that are more than 64 feet wide?
There are not.
Okay, so actually the 16, and I think you said 52 feet wide. So the 16 is, is more than the 25%. Do you need then the last part of that that says, "Or 25% of lot width, whichever is greater"?
Basically, that, that applies to a larger yeah, so for this, what this text amendment would do is for lots smaller than 64 feet wide, they'd be capped at 16. For lots wider than 64 feet, they'd be capped at 25%.
But if we didn't include that last part of it, the 25%.
That, I mean, that's a valid question, because I mean, suppose you have a wide lot, a large lot subdivision, you know, nice 100-foot wide lots. Do you really want a 25-foot wide driveway, you know?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we've always done it by the percentage of the lot width, but that may be kind of a flawed approach to begin with.
I'm just, you know, I just, I think 64, which is less, excuse me, more than what you're talking. Well, that I think is your point between 16 feet wide and the
Application of 25%.
So it might be we could consider taking out the 25% lot width or requiring a conditional use determination.
I like the idea of just taking it out, because at a certain point, it's not a driveway, it's a parking lot, you know? And so if 16 fits today, that, that might be a useful compromise.
We can, yeah, if y'all would like to propose in the motion to alter that language.
Do we do that now or later?
You can do it now.
Well, I think, yeah.
When you, when you make a motion, if you make a motion, yeah.
But we make motion after the public hearing.
After the public hearing, and after your discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Now, they can, after the driveway gets through the setback, flare it out at, right at, at the garage.
And I think, and I think that, that's the nuance. This is, this limitation is governed between the right of way and the front yard setback. So through that, in this application, that 15 feet, it's limited by that dimension. Once, once we get beyond that, then there is no restriction to that driveway. So in the three-car garage, 100-foot wide lot, if they have enough depth beyond that, they're 16 feet, and then they flare out to whatever, you know, three-car garage. So I, I think there may be a circumstance in the future where that application, you know, doesn't quite fit, but
I'd like to play that.
At least for this, I think it, it's lining, it's aligning the zoning text with the application of a cluster development, two-car garage, solving for and accommodating the off-street parking to not increase the pressure on, on street parking. And the overall stormwater is a consideration, but the site plan took into account through the engineering, the pervious runoff. Happy to answer any additional questions if you have, thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to approach the podium with comments? Please come forward, you have three minutes, and please give your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Sheldon, I am the president of Claybrook Owners Association Phase One. Basically, we're not really opposed to the expansion of the driveway from 12 to 16 feet. What we would like to know and give assurances on is if the currently planned sewage drainage will adequately handle an improved expansion of the driveways. It's a very compact and large development going on, and that's one of our primary concerns in terms of water runoff, to make sure the sewage system will be able to adequately handle it, and where this concern is coming from, as you guys may know, Claybrook Owners Phase One owns a pond in front of the subdivision. We spend quite a bit of time and money maintaining that pond, and it's sort of our baby, and we've already had one instance this past fall where we've had rainwater runoff from the new construction site into our pond already. So really, what we need to know is, or be given, preferably written assurances, that the additional driveway space will be handled properly by whatever sewer plans are going into the subdivision. That's basically it. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, but we'll get you an answer, David.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Anyone else interested in approaching the podium with comments?
Well, I've got a question for the applicant, now, are you the engineer, or are you just the, so when it comes to the stormwater stuff and some of the concerns we've heard now, is this just erosion and subcontrol law, or are you having to do the whole stormwater plan, and has that already been approved, or?
Current stormwater management plan's already been approved, so it has the public improvement plan, which has been approved, and what we are constructing under, within those approvals, have addressed both erosion sediment control for construction, and then long-term stormwater management through our ponds, both stormwater detention, stormwater quantity, and stormwater quality. So we've handled both of that through the applicable public improvement review and the ordinance and engineering design standards. I think one point of clarification, that our, the watershed drains to that pond from our property, and stormwater from our project will, has always, and will continue to flow into that pond through the watershed--
But yeah, but does the current--
Natural flow.
Yeah, of course, water rolls downhill, but does the current approved plan account for this 12,900 additional feet of impervious surface?
It does, it takes into account, the stormwater calculations have factored that, both from a impervious overall percentage of the lot, so roof and patio, and there are engineering assumptions that go into the calculation for the stormwater quality, not just the road and impervious surface of the road and sidewalk within the right-of-way.
So the thing that's going to get built is going to be able to handle this increased area?
It currently does, and would in the future with this amendment and change, and I would look to staff on the zoning text amendment, preliminary plat, and public improvement plan approval to confirm that.
Alright, yeah, and they actually already submitted--
I'm sorry.
The plan that they submitted had the 16-foot driveways on, just to make sure that they had it sufficient, even though we were not necessarily in favor--
So they've already covered that?
They have already covered that, and though, I mean, as sort of the wrinkle that we've discussed, the 13 to 16-foot, again, to bring up again, that they can also build the 16-foot permeable pavement driveways, doesn't give them that much credit on the stormwater stuff, really, but that is out there as well, so it's not a pure--
My question is whether your stormwater plan took into account 16-foot wide driveways.
The stormwater plan took into account percentage of the lot, so the house footprint is illustrative--
Right.
And so a different house and the amount of roof area that's factored into that is a percentage of the lot, so that plus the driveway from an impervious surface is factored into the assumptions to the stormwater design and what engineering at the city had reviewed in approving the plan, so pre-development condition, post-development condition, and the impervious assumptions, they can calculate road, they can calculate sidewalk, house, the size of house, the actual floor is subject to builder and future owner discretion, and so it's a percentage of, and that percentage covers current house and 16-foot driveways, what's shown on the plan.
But it does cover a 16-foot driveway rather than a 13-foot driveway.
Yeah, it depends on--
It covers a percentage of lot impervious area that encompasses a 16-foot driveway.
So theoretically, if they had a slightly narrower driveway and more impervious surface, they could have a larger house roof footprint, but yeah, it calculates that total square foot chart, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, you don't have any email in or anything comments?
I don't have any, I do not have any comments.
Okay, so I think I can close the public hearing. And inputs and comments from the planning commissioners?
Well, I was, I'm just thinking about our current condition that we're facing today with snow removal and the narrower streets over in Claybrook now, cars parked on one side and trying to get our snow equipment through to clean the streets, it makes it more difficult by widening the driveway and allowing people to put their cars up in the driveway, may help that considerably.
That's a very good point.
And how about fire access and things like that?
Well, fire access is included because they've got the fire zone there, one side of the, the side that the hydrants are on is a fire zone, so they're not allowed to park on that side, and that gives the width of the fire truck and workroom for the firemen to do their jobs.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything related to driveways that affects the fire at all.
Well, I think it's a good idea, I think it matches the house, I think we all have bigger cars, bigger families, and we all want to be able to pull into our driveways and open the doors to get out, so.
I do like striking that percentage part of it, though.
I do, I think striking that percentage, so Steve, if you wouldn't mind making the motion-- I know you have the lingo figured out, so if you wouldn't mind making the motion for us.
I would make a motion that we amend section 98.5.1.5. A, point three, in parentheses, G, to change the allowable maximum width of impervious V- travelways and parking areas within the required front yard setback to 16 feet, as proposed, eliminating that portion of the proposal or 25% of the lot width, whichever is greater.
Thank you very much. Could I have a second, please? Everyone in favor of what Steve said?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Really, it really gets exciting now.
No problem. See you, Dave.
David, give a call to the food pantry, we need some extra help.
Steve, thank you.
Jack, you're getting up a little slower these days, what's up?
Happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday, Jack. No, I'm not gonna say, Jack wouldn't like that.
Okay, we can move on to the presentation of the 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Thank you. I'm going to do a brief overview of the Planning Commission's activities in 2021. As far as development highlights go, the commission reviewed one conditional use permit, which was actually back in December, for the townhouses on South Magnolia, three zoning text amendments, and then nine rezonings throughout the year, spread throughout various parts of the city, and here's a look at how that, how last year's number trend with the past 10 years, our rezonings last year were much higher than average for the past couple of years, and there were no preliminary plats this year, or this past year, at all. As far as subdivision development goes, we had the construction start over at Creekwood Village and Ivy Commons, which we were just talking about, and then also the final phases of Evershire, the final plats were approved, and then construction on those final areas got underway last year as well. And then a look at the residential building permits that were issued last year, 130 were issued, which was, continues sort of a strong trend upward over the last three years, 2021 was 34, excuse me, a 34% increase over 2020, and even that was higher than 2019, which experienced a significant jump over the numbers in 2018. And then a brief look at some of the other activities that happened last year, we had the VDOT Smart Scale grant round, I think this was round four, the city was awarded funding for three of its four applications, the Roster Avenue corridor improvements, the West Main corridor improvements, and then also the Broad Street access management, and hopefully, construction for those will start in 2027, maybe. And then we also had the Brownfield grant kickoff, the steering committee met over the summer to determine some initial target properties, and then our consultant, Environmental Standards, is continuing to work to identify property owners interested in participating in the grant. And then we also had the first full year of the MXB district in effect. So far, we do think it's had a positive impact, the McClung Companies over on Commerce Avenue are expanding now as a, as by right use, and then also Blount Creatives, which is an artisan blacksmithing company out of Charlottesville, opened up a new facility over on Ohio Street at the corner of Mill and Port Republic Road, then also, last December, one of the text amendments you all considered was to allow some, sort of fix it, allow some additional uses that were admitted accidentally. And then finally, sort of looking ahead to what I hope is going to happen this year, we're expecting continued development, expecting that to stay strong this year, we've got two rezonings coming up next month, one's for that property north of Ivy Commons, and then also land behind the old Kmart is on the agenda for next month. We also hope to finally kick off the Port Republic Road Neighborhood Plan, assuming the pandemic cooperates, hoping to hopefully do that in the spring, and then also VDOT Smart Scale Round Five is this year, the grant application for that is opening up in March, so we're talking with VDOT about potential projects and applications, and then the Brownfields grant work is going to continue this year, and then we're going to try to apply for a VTран's Growth and Accessibility Planning Technical Assistance Program grant, that would allow us to update our bicycle plan and do a pedestrian plan and combine those into one. If successful, we hope that we would be able to do that in 2023, get the plans updated. The grant application period for that opens up in the fall, so we're making plans now to apply for that, and that is about all I had for you.
Thank you very much for putting that together. I think it looks like we were kind of busy.
I think there's a pretty good picture on the front of this.
Me standing in front of my sewing machine. Okay, do we have any other business or anything else?
I think you actually do have to approve the annual report--
Oh.
Y'all's report to council.
Motion, move to approve.
Second, someone have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor of approving the 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Any other business?
Not for me.
We are, as Allison mentioned, working on Smart Scale Round Five, so if you have thoughts on priorities as far as that goes, I mean, we have our list of capital improvement plan projects and so forth that we'll start working through, and usually, the best way to approach Smart Scale is to go to VDOT and say, "What do you think would score well?"
Is there any chance of getting like a public parking garage or something like that downtown?
Not with Smart Scale, but, I mean, that would have to be paid for entirely by the city, and they're expensive, but you could, we could pay and build one. There's been talk in the past, the only, I think the only serious talk there's been about a parking garage has been doing it as a partnership with the developer, possibly giving them land that's an existing city parking lot, and then in exchange, them providing public spaces and a structured parking, so that's been a discussion in the past, but it, it'll require--
But it's going to have to be some private-public partnership?
Yeah, I mean, or just a project on the city's part, the city could just, you know, raise $3 million and build a parking garage, so. Oh, yes, that's, you'll see that next week in a month as well, they are applying for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish that building--
Hallelujah, approved.
Wow, yeah.
Which one's that?
The-- The old-legged building, yeah. Next to it? So it would be the building and then the annex, it would not be the building next to it, it's the pharmacy, no, that's owned by another owner, it's a big, it's a big pain in the neck.
Is there some foreshadowing of what they have in mind to build there?
The pharmacy building?
The Belk.
Oh, yes, in fact, in the past, we have, our condition, sort of the previous Assistant City Manager, was that they would need to have an approved site and building plans in order to get a COA to tear it down. We're still going to make them have some kind of site plan and some, you know, show us something of what's going to go there, but you can't, you know, you can't really make them build something once they tear it down, and so I've kind of, I've laxed a little bit on, you know, maybe better to still just get it torn down.
Having it torn down is going to be better than it being there.
So, yeah, I think that's--
Given the history of Natural Museum come in, that one-story section and the parking lot would be a perfect place for a parking garage, and then the building next door, a hotel for downtown.
Yeah, certainly, I think it would--
That's according to Bob Anderson.
We really do.
I tried, I tried, couldn't get it done, yeah.
Luke, are we getting somebody to move into the, oh, shucks, Ruby Tuesday's building? I was asked that today.
We do not, we have, there's a car wash company that had looked at purchasing it, and they actually had submitted site plans and stuff to convert it into a car wash, they ran into some issues with our code, they were going to have to do some fairly expensive improvements there, we didn't really see that it was the kind of thing that we should be relaxing anything on for a car wash, but I think they've kind of stalled out, I'm not sure where they're at now.
Somebody told me a car wash, I said I hadn't heard of that.
I'm amazed at how much money car washes apparently make, because we had another one we were dealing with as well, that I thought, well, this is an expensive site, and I don't think it makes sense for a car wash, but man, they were ready to spend, so I don't know.
Well, hats off to the city on snow removal, they cleaned that stuff up, I think they did a great job.
Well, our guys, on this last trip--
Yeah, on this last trip, please go wrong.
Considering the wrinkles that were thrown into this storm, you know, we've only got four trucks per district or ward, and then out of those four trucks, we had a waterman break again, and they had to pull one truck or one crew from each ward, leaving us with only three to clear the entire city, I think they did a phenomenal job.
I think they did a great job, and this storm came fast, and it was half icy, half snowy, I think they did a great job.
And unfortunately, pretreatment didn't seem to work.
Well, it didn't because it was all powder, I mean, if it was more wet, it would have probably worked better, but it was powder when it first went down, and then the ice came over the top of that, so missed the pretreatment. But all in all, they did a great job--
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I feel, yeah.
I'll praise them. About 5:30, they did the little circle in front of my house, which of course piles it up in front of the driveway, but the fella came back, because two of us were out there, started working to clean it. us were out there, started working to clean it, and he kind of worked it and got rid of about two-thirds of it, so I didn't have hardly the work.
Well, and Mike told me the way they were doing it today, it was slower to get to the neighborhoods because they were doing just that. It was just so much accumulation. They didn't want to block people in. They were coming back trying to clean up a little bit, so.
They looked after me, and I told them that Luke today would plank that.
Making note of that.
And there's more to come, more to say.
That's what I'm hearing Thursday.
Thursday.
Bah. Which kind of stinks. I've got to work the fire in Maryland on Friday.
Okay, can we, I think we're done with proper business. Can we, can we make a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I'll make a motion we adjourn tonight.
Second.
Everyone in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone who wants to keep on meeting?
Nope.
We're done.